Good evening, I would like to call this regular October Board Meeting of the Bryant Board of Education to order. We'll start with the Pledge to the Flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with roll call, please.
Scott?
Here.
Syndra?
Here.
Tom? Deborah?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are in attendance with us this evening. We would like to, I would like to go to approving and signing of the regular September meeting minutes. If there's no additions or corrections that were noticed, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of any public participation. No one's just jumping up and ready to talk? Okay. We'll move on then to our student communications, our student spotlight tonight, the Bryant High School Student Spirit Leaders. I'm not sure who's gonna jump up first and, do you want me, let me try.
Hello, everybody. My name's Nate Miller and I'm a senior at Bryant. I'm involved in student council, NHS, and interact club, and I play football and baseball.
Hi, I'm Connor Arthur. I'm also involved in NHS, interact, football, baseball, basketball, and I'm president of student council, so.
This summer, Mrs. Arthur approached us about a senior internship, and for us, this would be a way to get involved in the community and build community relationships. So, our first kind of thing we wanted to do was a fundraiser, which last year we did it for the Athletic Boosters. And this was, if you guys remember, the best of the month last year. We sold short sleeve and long sleeve shirts. So this year, we're gonna do it again to benefit the Athletic Boosters because we feel that it's something that's benefited us all through high school. And it was just something that we always had, like the new jerseys last year, that was just something that we benefited from.
So, when we originally started this idea that we would like to do another fundraiser, the shirt, as Nate said, was our first option. And so we started thinking, started brainstorming some ideas, and we collaborated with Kelly and Brooks, who are in this picture. They both can't be here tonight. Brooks is playing soccer in district game and Kelly's playing in volleyball district game, so they can't be here. But we asked them to help us because they are two seniors who are leaders of the student section. And so, we thought it would be a great idea to get the students involved and make it like a student section shirt. And so, we brainstormed ideas, they helped us with the design, and then it was left to Nate and I to decide where we wanted to get them from, what we wanted to sell, and how we were gonna do all that. So, we brainstormed, we decided, we brought it down to Image Pro and Bill's locker room, and we talked, and we decided that Image Pro is the best option for us because it benefited us more money-wise, and they were a little cheaper. And also, it was helpful because we wanted to do crew neck sweatshirts and regular sweatshirts and long sleeve, short sleeve tees. And they had the best prices for all that. And so, when we first decided to pick Image Pro, they sent us a, we made an order form, if you want. We started by making an order form and sending it out via email. We sent it out on social media, we posted them all over the school, and we had flyers all over. And we also, throughout this process, wanted it to be more than just a student section t-shirt as we talked about it. So we decided that the best option would be to just make this open to anyone, elementary, the community, anyone. So we actually ended up selling not only like physical order forms but online too, and we got a lot of great sales and great numbers through that because many elementary kids bought and many people in the community bought. So, it was really good to just get a lot of people involved in that whole thing, so.
And we think this is a great thing just because when you go around Bryant and you see anywhere from kids this tall to like high schoolers like us and adults in the community wearing shirts, it kinda shows how close knit we are and, you know, that Bryant's a community where people can look to each other and kinda all one big family. So, there was a little bit of an issue. When we got the returns from Image Pro, sent out the orders, it didn't really look as the order form appeared. The logo was much smaller than what we had on the order form. So, we talked with Image Pro and they felt, as we did, that we wanted to give the customer the best, the best form that we could. And so they decided that we were gonna go back and change it and, to this logo, so that our customers would benefit. And this was really great of Image Pro because it kinda honed up and we were able to give our customers kinda what they needed.
So, we also, as we have down here, we decided that we liked the student section idea, but we thought maybe not everyone would want that, and just for some people, some, maybe not girlies or girls. But a lot of, a lot of girls like tie dye and stuff, and even some guys like I have one of these shirts. But we decided that maybe we should sell some of these and just get, even raise more money and just, we thought it'd be really cool to get people from high school to the little kids wearing these too. So we did another order of tie dye, and those sales were very good as well. And it's just every, every day at school or even on Friday nights at football games, you can see little kids, even high schoolers, wearing these shirts, and we just thought that was really cool to see people from, as Nate said, this tall, the high school wearing, and just repping what we did, and we just thought that was really cool. And so, our original idea for this was, we wanted to raise money for something that we could just give back to Athletic Boosters. So we ended up, we ended up deciding that when we got the bill from Image Pro, we agreed that the Bryant Athletic Boosters was gonna pay for our original base amount of how much it was gonna cost, and then any profit we made was gonna go back to them. So, I know Mr. Tinkle's not here, but we have a check of the profit that we made, and this is going to Bryant Athletic Boosters.
Could you guys get a picture of Kelly and Brooks on it? Stand on each side, hold it right underneath them. You got it, there you go. Raise it up a little bit. There you go.
Very nice.
That's great.
I told him you might have some questions. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Great job.
And as soon as you graduate, are you available to come work for me and go into sales?
Possibly.
Nice job, guys. Very nice.
Thanks.
It's a great.
Do you have another project in the works yet for this year? I mean, it's still early.
So, right now, we're looking to raise money for the baseball team. This year, we're planning on taking a spring trip. So our idea right now is to talk to the park board about making a sign that we could hang up outside the dugout. And this would be something where it'd kinda be like a sponsorship opportunity for businesses around the community. And right now, we're thinking it'd be each year they can kind of renew their sponsorship and their name would be on that board. And it'd help this year go to proceeds for our spring trip, and the remainder would just go to Bryant Baseball Association.
We also, we also have a, every year, or we started last year, fan appreciation night up at the football game. And this is just another way to raise money for Bryant Athletic Boosters. And so we've been working on that as well as working on this, and this has been a load, but we've been able to work on other things too, so.
Have any idea how many hours you volunteered and put into this project?
Well, it's been difficult because we only have one internship period at the end of the day, so it's the last 45 minutes of the day. And that's really not enough time sometimes. So, one weekend when we got the order from Image Pro, we went in on Sunday and packaged them all up. And that took quite a while, but, yeah, I'd like to have a little more time, but.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's not. There's never enough time.
Thank you. Well, thank you for all you're doing for Bryant.
Well done. Great job, guys.
Well, at this point in time, we'd love to have you stay if you would like, but you're welcome to. We'd like to do that as well. We totally understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your time.
Great job last Friday night, too, guys.
Good job.
Great job.
Okay. Well, we'll move on then to the treasuries report and recommendations, please.
Thank you. We'll begin with cash reconciliation. At Farmers Emergent State Bank, we have $4,862,559.24. Outstanding adjustments of $63,697.82. For investments at Star Ohio, $929,090.29. At UBS Financial, $4,327,521.41. At State Bank, $6,415,196.70. At Star Ohio Plus, $2,478,970.13. For total investments of $14,150,778.53. Cash on hand is $7,400. For total funds balance of $18,957,039.95. To highlight a few of the funds, the general fund balance at the end of September was $14,163,656.17. The bond retirement fund was $2,030,00, excuse me, $2,030,820.98. And the permanent improvement fund was $1,702,708.80. In addition to that, there are several other financial reports in Exhibit B, and I will take any questions on them if you might have them. In that case, at this time, I would like to give Patrick King from Stiefel an opportunity to address the board regarding refunding of a bond series.
As Mr. Schaefer said, I'm Patrick King from Stiefel.
If we can have, if it works best, if you come on over here and I'll hand those down.
This is a presentation I put together that's probably a bit more interesting than we really need to talk about this evening. But in 2007, well, two times in 2017 and one time in 2016, the Bryant City School District executed what are called advanced refineries on the 2014 series of bonds that were sold to fund the construction of the new high school. At the end of 2017, when the district executed the transaction, we thought that these opportunities would not come around again because of a change in tax law that did not allow for municipal issuers of bonds to refinance ahead of their call date on a tax exempt basis. So we are here this evening, or I am here this evening, to talk about a refinancing opportunity where you would take taxable bonds and refinance tax exempt bonds, which in a normal market really doesn't make any sense to take taxable bonds and refinance tax exempt bonds with them. But because interest rates are so low, there is an opportunity available to Bryant to save a significant amount of money. So if you flip through, and I'll try to go through this quickly, but if you have questions, interrupt me, please. Page three, you have all of the district's outstanding bond obligations, and the three series that are, basically, the savings opportunities that are described in this presentation are the first three, the Series 2014A, the 2014B, and then the certificates of participation, Series 2014. So if you flip to page four, you can see the savings associated with this. And I have more of those on the chair if other people are interested in trying to follow along. There is savings associated with refinancing the 2014A. It's about, in this green box down here, you can see it's about 3.45% of the total outstanding amount. That, in today's market, is not significant enough savings to warrant moving forward. If you flip two pages ahead to the Series 2014B bonds on page six, those savings are above 7%, saving nearly half a million dollars on a cash flow basis. And that is the series that we've identified to proceed with a refinance of. If you look, flip then ahead to page eight, you can see the certificate of participation outstanding with the district have a savings of a little over 1%. Again, not enough money to justify going forward. But I will note that if we do the 2014Bs, there will very likely be an opportunity 12 months from now or even sooner to come back and do the Series 2014A bonds as the market changes and the district gets closer to its call dates. I think one thing I wanna highlight without going through in too great detail is the state of interest rates. If you look on page 10, we have a graph where we've laid out a 10-year look at 2-year treasury rates, 10-year treasury rates, and 30-year treasury rates, as well as lines for when the district sold their 2014 bonds and certificates of participation. And you can see that this market doesn't, where rates are today, doesn't look like where rates have been historically in terms of how clustered together these three different maturities of interest rates are. And that's a big reason why this opportunity exists for taxable, for the taxable advance or funding. The typical process, for those of you who have not heard me talk about this before, is about an eight-week process. We're hopeful to get this done in 2019 and allow the district then to realize those savings and then markets cooperate and come back next year and do a similar transaction in 2014A. So, Ms. Savage and Mr. Schaefer will be hard at work over the next couple of months putting together an official statement and all the documents we will do. A phone call with Moody's to get the district's credit rating updated and go through that process. So, there's, as some of you who have been through this before know, this is a undertaking that requires a bit of time and energy, so we will be hard at work. Also worth noting that there's a resolution in front of you tonight to approve this transaction. It does not obligate the board to go forward, it just allows you to go forward. It is not anything that requires you to do anything. If the market goes sideways, you can pull back and are not obligated to do anything, so. That's my talk. Mr. Schaefer, Ms. Savage, any comments, thoughts, additional?
Can we just, again, I know we have to, it depends on the interest rate, but can we just highlight again the approximate or projected savings?
Sure, absolutely. So we are looking at a savings to the taxpayer of about half a million dollars. As it shows up here, it's about $487,000. And basically, the essence of the transaction that we are proceeding with is to take bonds that have an interest rate of 4.07% and replace them with bonds that have an interest rate of 3.19%. So, it is that nearly 80 basis points or 0.8% savings that results in the interest reduction, or the interest cost reduction, so. I will note that a lot of districts are doing this right now. I was in Archibald. They have a opportunity that is much smaller than this that we talked about, Liberty Center is going forward. So, school districts all across the state certainly, and I would guess the country, are taking advantage of these opportunities if their bonds hit the parameters, so. It's a very active market and something we're trying to take advantage of. Questions, comments?
Thanks for the good news.
You know, it's all preliminary at this point, so we gotta, we gotta hope things hold in. We don't expect, the people who really track this at our firm don't expect rates to change significantly in the near term, so we're hopeful we can sneak, get in and out and capture the savings and come back in December with a positive report.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you working with us.
Yep, appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Patrick.
Then also for the board's consideration, we have a now and then certificate for fully school solutions in the amount of $61.18. And we would like to recognize the following donations: $500 from Bryant Linus Club for school lunches for students in need, various items from the Haas Bakery for the kindergarten class, and $3,249.50 from the George Azar and Mary Aide Isaac Memorial Fund for the Student Assistance Fund.
Okay, are there any questions for Kevin? If not, I will take a motion to approve the treasuries report and recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Second. Second. Thank you, Deb.
Syndra?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, under old business, I'm gonna defer to Mrs. Savage. Do we have tennis court update?
Yes, so last Monday, a week ago from today, where the weather was way better than it is tonight, we held our first and only fall tennis match on the new courts. Defiance was gracious enough to come over and actually were, they were excited to be a part of it. We had a great community turnout, we had a great win. So it was a, kind of a soft opening of our tennis facility. And we'll continue to do some work and finish up that project, but they are open, they are open to the public. So public members, community members can please come and enjoy the new courts. Also wanna thank not only the tennis committee, but the Bryant Parks and Rec for working with us for all these years, and it's just another great opportunity that we're offering in our community. So we are very excited and look forward to what that brings us. And we've already had physical education classes, taking advantage of the courts and being out there almost every day the first week they were open, so it's great to see. So, questions on that?
Do we anticipate everything else being wrapped up yet before winter this year, or will?
No, things will go into the spring, yeah. They're running out of weather, so they'll have to delay some of the additional landscaping, lights, installing, storage facility until the spring.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, last month, our presentation, one of our presentations was on the esports proposal. And I know Mr. Rary was not able to be here this evening. He is covering the boys' soccer game tonight. But would like to answer any questions the board may have, and would request that the board consider approving that so that we can be ready for a spring season. So thoughts on our esports proposal?
Would we anticipate a report back at the end of this first half a season here coming up for the spring season?
I don't know that we'll do a presentation, but we certainly would have information.
Some information to share about those things. Great. Great question, because I would like to know how many end up actually, I mean, the number sounded large, but if we're going to do varsity and junior varsity and how many actually follow through, so. I'm a supporter of it.
Yeah, absolutely. I have no questions. I think we should move forward with it.
So we would need a motion.
I was gonna say, you wanna take action then? Go ahead and, so I will take a motion to approve the esports club for Bryant High School.
So moved.
Second.
Scott? Thank you, Mike. Is that worded okay for you, Kevin?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Look forward to hearing more about that as it proceeds forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, so next, under new business, I actually have two items of note here, but officially, also bringing to the board a request from the Bryant Elementary. And I wanted to bring this forward because it kind of fits with our esports discussion from last month. So we have two teachers at our elementary building that would like to volunteer their time, not for the full year, but for two or three sessions of after-school STEM lab. So we have three to four STEM labs in our elementary that are filled with hands-on activities, which also promote the things we heard about last month, the critical thinking, the collaboration, the communication, but at an elementary level. And so, I'm asking the board, and Karen is here tonight, Karen and I both approve of this club. We think it would be a great addition to our elementary. It would provide some after-school programming for our students. So we're, I know this is kind of introduced and we'll answer questions, but since we were on the technology theme, I thought I would bring this for your consideration as well.
Just for everyone, can you, again, say what each of those letters S-T-E-M stand for?
STEM, I should ask you. So STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math.
I just wanna make sure we have that for you. Do we have an idea of how many students we can accommodate? Should the interest be?
Each session would be limited to the number of kits or materials that we have for those sessions. So again, we'll, that's why the teachers would like to offer multiple sessions throughout the year to give different students an opportunity.
So the idea is that there'll be different people involved each time, or students would have?
Different students.
Each time?
Yes.
Offered to fourth and fifth grade.
Okay.
Is it the same program each time for different students?
I think last time they did the same thing. It was different students but doing the same things, using the Ozobots, using the Makie Makies, the Spiros, all of those things.
Any possibility of turning it into a STEAM?
With creating that arts in there? Possibly, yeah. Possibly.
Okay. I just always found that after learning about when STEM became more relevant in districts years ago, and then they added the A, the arts factor into it.
The two teachers that are, one, they are both very motivated by technology. They encourage technology and utilize technology in their classroom. One's a math teacher, one's a science teacher, so they, but I'm sure that that's something that they could consider.
And in time, I'm not asking to throw something else at them, but. So at this time, not requiring any extra funds?
No.
This is all with materials that are currently available?
This is all with materials we already have on hand, just requesting permission from the board to be able to host these after school.
Absolutely. And how many kids, again, can participate in each session? Did I miss that?
Last year, it was around 20 to 25.
Each session?
Yeah, and they had, I know that Mr. Malanga came a few times from the ESC utilizing some of the resources because other schools that were actually asking about what, there was a trial run done last year, and it was very successful.
Do we need a motion then to approve that?
If we could, yes.
One more thing too.
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry.
So we're talking about three sessions or so, three or four sessions, they've been willing to facilitate these two teachers?
Yes.
Is there any talk about, you know, incorporating more advisors that would help with this?
Again, we just, we have two teachers that are willing to step up and do it, so.
Okay, good, great.
At no additional cost to the district.
Yeah, no, it's great. I'm just trying to make a bigger man. Get one once a month or something, you know, so that you can have these kids, you know,
There you go.
Three times a year is, you know, fairly spaced out, and it's kinda, it'd be nicer.
But it runs for a whole week.
Right, I understand that, but it's, it's definitely nice to get more of those.
Well, we just, we work with the volunteers that we have.
That's right, that's what I was saying.
Well, and also you really utilize the technology that's out there, and not everybody knows how to utilize some of those technology pieces that we have.
Right. That's very good.
Okay, I will take a motion then to allow our teachers that are volunteering to, to facilitate a STEAM club.
STEM?
STEM. And that A in there.
You have yourself.
I am, and that arts factor, a STEM club. S-T-E-M, and that arts factor, a STEM club for Bryan Elementary, fourth and fifth grade.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cassandra?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then one other item of new business before we head into the superintendent recommendations. We are announcing a new program tonight for our community and our students. And what I'm passing around, and if we have extras, we can, we can share them with our newspaper coverage that is here tonight. But it's called Stop It. And Stop It is an anonymous reporting system. It is an app that students and/or parents can download on their phone. It has a code that specifically goes to either the Bryan Elementary Building or the Bryan Middle School High School Building. So depending on what code you enter, just depending on what building your student goes to, you can utilize it on your phone, you can utilize it on a Chromebook, on a, on an Apple machine, on a home computer. It doesn't have to be an app, but it is available as an app. And what happens when a student reports either bad behaviors or students making bad choices, there's an email, when a report is submitted, there's an email that goes to those respective administrative teams. And the teams then can start investigating whatever it is that's being reported. The person that is doing the reporting remains anonymous. So the administrators can have a text conversation with that person. That person can choose whether or not they want to identify who they are, but they can remain anonymous through this whole process. You can take photos and send them in, you can take videos and send them in. So this is just again, a two-page document that gives a highlight. This is at no cost to the district. This is in partnership with our new insurance company, Sorsa, who backs this. Also located within the app or program are resources for people to access if they are in a crisis situation and need some additional help. So statistically, once we launch, which we're doing officially tonight, we will see a surge in some reporting. But then the statistics of this company and this program show that your number of behaviors reported will go down. Your actual number of poor choices and bad behaviors will go down as well because people will realize that they can be turned in at any time, any place, anywhere. So we're very excited about this. The administrators have been experimenting with the program for the past few weeks just to test it out. We've had some bullying issues with Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck, and we feel like we have had that under control, and we just got to work on the Ohio State Michigan problem, so... Other than that, questions that you have?
Well, my question was going to be, and you said about the statistics, was the overwhelming, you know, this is going to take off big at first, I would imagine.
Yeah.
And people are going to be reporting all kinds of things. Are our resources prepared for this inundation of reports? And then another part of this is, and I haven't really looked at this or reviewed it, how do they, how do they decipher, you know, what is absolutely not a, you know, a non-issue?
Well, they'll have to investigate each report. And, but if it is, let's say, for example, it is an issue that is a community or a outside-of-school issue. For example, someone is at Garver Park and is graffitiing the wall, and it's on a Sunday afternoon. So that's, you know, not on school grounds, not on school time. That is a bad decision that's being made in the community. I've already talked with Mayor Schlade, we've already talked with, I've talked with... We will refer those on to our SROs, who will then share that information with Bryan Police Department, and then they can make a decision on what would happen next. But there will have to be some filtering of duplicate reporting or things that are not school-related.
And what kind of penalty, again, I haven't looked at this long enough or reviewed it, penalties for false reporting in terms of, you know, kids retaliating against someone else or using it for nefarious reasons versus...
The video and photos will help because you'll have to have actual evidence. Again, we can track, each report will be assigned a specific number, an identification report. We can, we can see if there are multiple reports about the same incident. We can see if there are multiple reports that prove to be false leads. It's just the same...
Because being anonymous, it's going to be hard to, you know...
But we have this every day. We have kids that come report things that are false every day, so... Other questions? We're really excited because again, you know, we often get asked, what are we doing to try to combat the bullying issue and the bad choices and bad behaviors? And we're going to venture in the Serena. Okay, so under superintendent recommendations, we have the approval of the YMCA agreement for the nineteen twenty, nineteen nineteen, nineteen tw... Let me start over. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty swim team, so usage of the pool. And that is the same contract that we utilized last year, as well as approval of a contract with CHWC and St. Pat's for speech services. Questions on either one of those?
You've had these in your minutes for tonight. Is there any questions over the documents? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thanks, Deb.
Second?
Thanks, Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Cassandra?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under personnel recommendations, we have classified staff adjustments, velvet phase, six-to-twelve educational aid. Last month, we approved her at five hours per day. Her hours should actually be four point five, so that was effective September tenth. And then Chris Kisecker, preschool aide, one-on-two. Her hours, her bus route is taking about fifteen minutes longer every, each and every day, so we're going to increase her hours to five point two-five, effective ten fifteen of nineteen. We welcome John Betts, bus driver, at three point five hours per day, zero years' experience, effective ten eight nineteen. We're very appreciative to have John onboard as a full-time driver. Classified substitutes are listed, as well as certified substitutes, and we are appreciative of the continued interest in those areas. We thank you. And then you have, it's time to look at approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty winter supplemental contracts and the approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty athletic department workers, and this will be for both winter and spring.
If there aren't any questions from Mrs. Savage for the personnel recommendations, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb.
Cassandra?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Under points of information, so again, we've had kind of a busy month this month. I just wanted to share, I know earlier we recognized some donations to the school district. We were fortunate enough, and I'm going to rely on Scott Benedict to help me with this part of the meeting. We were fortunate enough to have a visit from Scott "Shuttleman" Phillips, was in our community. And Mr. Phillips donated a tree from the moon. And so this, he wanted me to share this with the board. He donated it in memory of Brandon Kreischer. So this, this plaque itself is eventually going to go to the family. So I'll pass that around. We have, he also donated a copy of his book, which is called Remove Before Flight. And Scott, you can jump in here anytime. These tags are replicates of when he was working on the shuttle. This was his job, was to remove this tag right before liftoff. That was the last, so he shared some of those with the board members. He also donated, which will get these to Mr. Rary, some shuttle informational posters directly from NASA for our science department. So we have those. And we have the certificate of authenticity of the actual piece of the moon tree that was planted or grown on the moon, and it was originally planted back in Florida. But then Hurricane Irma, was it Hurricane Irma, Scott? Yep. That came through in August of two thousand seventeen and destroyed the tree. And so we have a piece of that. And then this is just a little bit more information on the moon tree and the Moon Tree Foundation. And the tree itself is currently, again, a big thank you to the Bryan City Parks and Rec Department, and they are willing to keep the tree and help it grow and get stronger before we actually do the planting. So what did I miss?
No, you got it all. Yeah, the tree is only, it's a small sapling, and it's just not strong enough to withstand the outside right now. It'll thrive here in this environment. It's actually an American sycamore. It's one of the largest trees in North America. It'll grow to potentially a hundred feet. It's a, it's a very large tree. But it is right now not plantable, so the Parks and Recs are going to take care of it for us for a couple of years. Court Gosha and I were in discussions that in about two to three years, the tree will be about eight, seven to ten feet tall. Right now it's only about this tall, and with a, with a girth of only a couple of inches. But it, in about two years, it'll be much taller and have a much bigger girth and will sustain the outside. So we just need to then look at a location to plant this tree and then potentially have another, Scott is willing to come back up from Alabama when we have that ceremony to actually plant the tree.
Yep.
Fun.
They have it like in a greenhouse right now? It is. It's in the Parks and Recreation Greenhouse right now, and Court's taking, going to take good care of it for a couple of years. And it was actually, you know, it's, it is, it's, it's like second generation from the seeds that were actually germinated on Apollo fourteen. So these seeds were planted. Then the nursery that this came from is from a nursery in Tennessee that they, this is what they do. They grow these trees from historic trees to then give them out as donations or contributions to communities.
That's neat.
Where they've come from, you know, maybe George Washington lineage or something like that. But these are from the moon, so it's kind of neat.
Yeah. It's really neat.
Very nice.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a great day. And thank you to Scott for kind of being that liaison for us.
Kind of facilitated getting him here. He also brought a guitar up that is, was in anniversary of the fiftieth, the fiftieth anniversary of the landing on the moon in nineteen sixty-nine. And it's, it's a beautiful guitar. If you haven't seen pictures of it on Facebook or other places, we had it down a chorus for a little bit, and some young musicians were able to take advantage of playing that. I got to play it a little bit, and it was, it's a spectacular guitar. And that's going to be donated back to NASA. And it will be, it's a, it's about a twenty-five thousand dollar guitar. It was made by the CF Martin Guitar Company. And it's going to be on display in a case as you walk into the Huntsville, Alabama NASA facility to see some of these large rockets and stuff. But it'll be on the, in the lobby as you walk in, so it's pretty cool.
Well, thank you.
And very nicely done for the Kreischer family in memory of Brandon. So it's nice.
Very nice. Thank you for helping.
I do, but not well.
All right, I, just reminders of our next board meeting dates. We have the Capitol Conference in Columbus, November tenth to the twelfth. We do need to talk about logistics, just making sure everybody has a way there and a way home. Board of Education meeting will be back here November eighteenth at seven PM in the boardroom. LPDC meeting November twelfth, and our next Business Advisory Committee meeting will be January fifteenth. And then we're going to turn it over, I'll take a break for a minute. We'll let Mr. Bassett give his report, and then followed by Mrs. Cox. And then I have a couple of updates from our people who could not be here tonight.
Well, good evening. Tomorrow for us starts our third grade air test, our state testing. If you remember, back in the spring, you guys passed a resolution to take that from, on paper instead of electronically this year. So that's the first time in three or four years we ventured into the paper route. We haven't had a choice, first time we've had a choice. So kind of interesting to see how that plays out, the results. And that was a choice that we let the teachers have some input in, how they felt the students would do better or worse, paper, pencil. They chose paper. They wanted to try the paper for the year. So be interesting to see those results. I just want to take a moment tonight, last week was National School Lunch Week, just to thank our cafeteria staff and what they do for our school district and for our kids every single day. It's kind of, I was telling them, it's a thankless job. Too many kids come through, they're in a hurry to get their tray, they don't really say thank you a whole lot. They're just ready to sit down and eat. We serve about over a thousand Just Type A lunches a day. That doesn't mean, I was over there today helping out a little bit, and lots of à la carte items that we're selling at the high school level. But Just Type A, we're about a thousand a day. The high school, you know, a great opportunity for them is our salad bar. We have fifty-five to sixty kids that purchase salad every day. It's a nice option for maybe the kids that don't like the Type A lunch that day to go for a little healthier option. So I just want to take a moment to thank those individuals. Looking ahead, curriculum-wise, this year we're starting to, we'll get that committee formed here. Quickly, we're going to look at K to five language arts will be up for adoption this year. We'll start looking at some of those programs. That role has changed. It used to be just a few publishers, and now there's a wide variety, which can be overwhelming, but it's also a good thing too. Lots of options that we can kind of see what best fits our needs.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cox?
Well, we are doing our last parent-teacher conference night on Thursday. We've had two nights already. Thursday is our last night, and parents can still sign up. There's still time. Parents just need to email their teacher. We've had a great turnout. I've asked teachers to turn in their numbers for all three nights, and I like to get a percentage of that for all three nights combined. So we're doing great. We're on a roll there. We are hosting our countywide Quiz Bowl tomorrow at the elementary. It's, I don't believe we've held it, I don't even remember when we were at the middle school, if we held it at the middle school. So I'm excited. We're going to have community, community members in our building, looking at our building. I'm excited to show it off. So that is tomorrow night, countywide Quiz Bowl at the elementary. I believe it starts at six. On October twenty-eighth, we are having a McTeacher Night again. I don't know if any of you had the pleasure of going to McDonald's last year for McTeacher Night. We're splitting it up into two sessions. We have a Mrs. Dominic session from four thirty, Mrs. Dominic team from four thirty to six, and then Mrs. Thormeyer team from six to seven thirty. McDonald's has been great to work with. I, I don't want to, I don't remember exactly how much, but I know that we received over a thousand dollars from what we made that night that all went back to Bryan Elementary. So Jim Ravello and his son have been very good to work with and very generous. So that is October twenty-eighth. And then we just found out that our Bryan Elementary PBIS team, our proposal got accepted to present to other teams or other areas, schools in Ohio. Our proposal was accepted. Our proposal was entitled, "Our PBIS, Bryan Elementary, Our PBIS Journey." So with PBIS being mandated that schools have to have it, it's a way to show other schools the steps along the way. This is year four for us. We did one year of strictly planning, and then we're implementing year three. And so we want to share our journey with other schools that are going through this process. So we have a team speaking December eleventh at the Ohio PBIS Showcase. And then we also have three members of our team speaking to other area schools in Ohio on November first. So it's the same presentation, but different people on the team are doing it at two different times. So they're excited to share their journey. The PBIS committee has worked very, very hard. They're happy with where we've been and where we're going, so... They're happy with where we've been and where we're going, so...
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, for those who could not be here tonight, because we had district soccer and district volleyball, Mr. Savage prepared just a fall sports review for you, just highlighting all of the different accomplishments of all of our different fall sports. And then on the second page, just a reminder of things that are going on this Friday for the Evergreen Home Football Game. So a couple of reports there. And then Mr. Rary was unavailable to be here tonight, so he said I can pick and choose, because he has quite a list as well. But first of all, a thank you to community advocates of healthy families, not only for sponsoring Ready, Set, Relax Night, but also bringing Speaker Brad Herding to talk to our students at grades six through 12. This week, again, we got like all kinds of stuff going on in Bryan City Schools and in our community, but this week, our juniors are going to get to hear the Supreme Court live at Montpelier High School. All of our juniors will be attending this session, and this session is open to the public. So if anybody is interested in seeing the Supreme Court, there will be three cases heard and tried at Montpelier High School. It starts around 9:00 AM and will conclude by noon. It is a like once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, because they go to all 88 counties. So we probably won't be here the next time this comes around. But also thank you to the local attorneys who have been coming into the school and volunteering their time to work with our students and to help prep them for what they're about to see and hear, and we're really looking forward to that event, so...
Silly question. How will juniors pick their receivers?
Because they're in government. The Ohio Supreme Court specifies that it's your government classes
Sure.
that get to go.
Should have figured that one. Okay, thank you.
So also, congratulations to our students who are enrolled in our brand-new manufacturing course. We had a 100% passage rate in the first test that they took to get their certification. They have to take a total of four tests this year, but 100% passage, so congratulations to them. We have concert season. We have a middle school music performance next Monday night and a marching band concert on Sunday, November 3rd. The fundraiser for grades six to eight is wrapping up, and Bryan High School is hosting a blood drive on Thursday, October 24th, and that is also open to the public. So you can go to see the Supreme Court on Wednesday. Come donate blood on Thursday. And I'll get these to you guys as well. And that concludes our reports.
Dana, where are they holding the blood drive?
The blood drive will be at the middle school, high school, in the auxiliary gymnasium.
Okay. Well, we do have a need to go into executive session. I do not anticipate any actions to be taken, but it will be under A, the compensation of an employee. I will take a, well, I'd like to say thank you for those who attended and those watching. I will take a motion to move then into executive session.
So moved.
Deb? Mike?
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, those in attendance and those watching, and we appreciate your time.